Commission's court from March 24th. Wilson County Commission's Court from March 24th, 2014. We delayed it slightly because of that we had had an error as far as posting, but it didn't take them. So we managed to get that straightened out, so we'll go on with the court now. Now in session, Ms. Eva, would you please?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory for ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And he knows that we're not a farm now. He knows. We have no public comments in the certificate of completion.
We have a number of them.
Number of certificates?
Yes.
County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas, Commissioners Education Certificate of Completion. This is certified and our comments. Wilson County Commissioner has successfully completed the continuing education provision of Article eighty-one point zero zero two-five of the Texas Local Government Code, 2013, signed by Richard Cartis and Ed Jones. County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas, Commissioners Education Certificate of Completion, this is certified that Ricky Morales, Wilson County Commissioner, has successfully completed the continuing education provision of Article eighty-one point zero zero two-five of the Texas Local Government Code, 2013. County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas, Commissioners Education Certificate of Completion, this is certified that Mary Wiley, Wilson County Commissioner, has successfully completed the continuing education provision of Article eighty-one point zero zero two-five of the Texas Local Government Code, 2013. Wilson County Commissioners, County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas, Commissioners Education Certificate of Completion, this is certified at all five. Wilson County Commissioner has successfully completed the continuing education provisions of Article eighty-one point zero zero two-five of the Texas Government Code. County Auditors and Certified Account Certified for Continuing Education, 2014, Regional Pool Workshop, March eleventh, 2014, St. Marcus. Tom Dubnick, Wilson County Auditor. CPE claim seven. Total number of session hours times sixty divided by fifty around down to the nearest. I represent that.
It sounds like something for an auditor.
Yes, sir, that is it. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we have. Let's go down to item eight. Discuss and take action on Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation, April 2014. Ms. Perez, would you like to read this into the record, Paulus?
I'll let Dorothy.
Oh, yeah, do it.
This is Dorothy Perez. She's on board.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. They'll appreciate that rather than listening to me read it.
Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation, April 2014. Whereas every child is a precious gift, full of limitless abilities and promise, and deserves to be reared in a positive, safe environment, free from the threats, influence, and harmful effects of child abuse. And whereas sixty thousand children are confirmed abused each year in Texas, abuse and neglect can cause traumatic, psychological, emotional, and physical damage to children of all ages. And the prevention of child abuse is important to their healthy development. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families, child abuse prevention is a community responsibility, and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, communities of faith, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas the color blue has been chosen as international symbol for child abuse because it represents the bruised and battered bodies of the thousands of children abused every day. And whereas the Wilson County Children's Services Board is facilitating the promotion of Child Abuse Prevention Month in our county by announcing April ninth, 2014, as Go Blue Day. Therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Wilson County, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2014, to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens to wear or display blue ribbons to honor all children and to promote the prevention of child abuse and neglect.
Thank you. Mary Wiley, Mr. Comment, all of them. Oh, by the way, Commissioner Morales is sick today. All of the ladies involved with the county agency, would you please stand? You can stand, figure out if you work with them. We want to tell you how much we appreciate all that y'all do. That's a very important part. That is so important, but not noticed by everybody in the community, and we do appreciate very much your service.
Thank you. Queen, I'll just let them know. We also, just in case y'all want to know, because we have the office for the, the county office for the top of the services has moved, and it's off of, it gets across from the post office. So if any of y'all have any concern, if people ask you, that's where it has moved. It's no longer right over here on one eighty one. What is that? What is that?
Pull up a drive.
I can.
Make sure your husband wears blue that month.
Oh, I'll drop him by next week.
Next week?
Make sure your husband wears blue, honey.
And I'll put blue on the fly hood.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to add a nine while we're there. Blue Rosenberg Consider Take Action on Resolution in support of Wilson Area Housing Foundation Cowboy Breakfast, April twenty-sixth, 2014.
Thank you, Judge. This is a local organization, if I might just take a second, that started out of the Sunday School Room at the Methodist Church in nineteen ninety-four. We went and did food for some people. We found their houses to be in improper and poor condition. Before we could respond to that house, that house burned. And after that house burned, they got a trailer there, a manufactured housing plate. And after the manufactured housing was there for about two weeks, it burned. So we were stimulated to get into the housing business in addition to making food distribution, which a number of the Commissioners, but particularly Commissioner Thomas has assisted in. We do that for Thanksgiving and Christmas and try not to duplicate what the sheriff does with his salmon at Christmas time. But what we're doing with the Cowboy Breakfast, it's a fundraiser for us. And the short and quick of it is seven thirty in the morning for early pancakes. You don't do something else as soon as you lend your pancakes to it. And we ask you to come join us, and auction starts at eight fifteen. And without further ado, a resolution of the Wilson County Commissioners Court in support of the Wilson Area Housing Foundation Cowboy Breakfast, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, 2014, at the Sacred Heart Parish grounds with UG both parks facility. And whereas the foundation was organized to provide housing improvements for families referred from school districts, and all referrals come from the school districts, Orson Independent or one of the other school districts. Whereas the, and this is a real goof on our part, we're arguing between us whether this is the twelfth or thirteenth. So in one place it says the twelfth, another says the thirteenth. So we're going to go for the twelfth. Whereas the breakfast place will be on sale for ten bucks, and I'm skipping. Now therefore being resolved that the Wilson County Commissioners Court has hereby support the Social Services Office activities relating to families in need of residential assistance, and hereby urges the community and business community to support the twelfth annual R and R. That stands for Commissioner Rodder. Cowboy Breakfast, which this year will be located at Sacred Heart, and urges community support. Please, if you'll let me skip ahead, use Brenda's number there. Brenda Public is the most able paralegal in her office. She's across from Trail Riders, and the number there is two one six four oh seven five. And we ask that you approve this in support of our efforts, and ask that you be there. And most of your Commissioners, the Judge, and County Clerk, and sometimes even the Commissioner, not the Commissioner, the Auditor, will come over and visit with us, and we'll get a picture of you. Unfortunately, I haven't framed those, but I wanted to get some to the Sheriff's Office as soon as I could, and I haven't done that.
It's not a picture to profile.
Thank you for saying that. I didn't want to get that part. Anyway, with a little humor involved, we ask you to support us and be there and enjoy a few minutes of conviviality. Yes, sir. We'll get our name on there, Judge. Good idea.
Motion.
Remember, this is a volunteer organization.
By Hope, Commissioner Thomas. And the reason is that the mix-up was flawed that twelfth and thirteenth, that first year, it was just him and Emmett having breakfast.
By the way, Emmett's free of the problem with his foot, although he's still walking around with a limp. And I was pointed out this morning, I'm not sure where Emmett is, but he's doing well. Thank you very much. And thank you for the suggestion, Judge. And Brenda's number's on the bottom of that document, Judge.
She goes to go back to item four, public hearing. Courthouse annex one, two, three, update comments.
We're looking more from Austin on the call last Monday regarding the funding for the foundation, the super fund. Today, you process actually, we met last Tuesday on the matter. So we're still hearing way too different men, but final decisions. But more we've been so far, it's all going to good. We have a couple of issues to be dealing with, I just know. We should still be hearing on that date, sort of secondary April. Hopefully we get the funds to kick off with courthouse. Would you back numbers on the criminal justice center of the construction estimates? They say sending on Friday. I haven't received my emails as of this morning. But if it comes through, we'll be reviewing those and seeing if the numbers are good or bad, where we need to be. About the courthouse, the existing courthouse numbers, they're good. I just wait to hear from the county, but we can't, from the federal money, we can't do anything until that minimum portion. Otherwise, we'll lose any chance of change. The bench seats, the finalists contact us back with the bench seats, so hopefully we'll be able to secure them all next week. Also, I'll be contacting you on that. That's it. We'll be on for today. I'll fill in the one you assume.
Just, anybody have anything else?
Judge, I just want to ask, Lindsay, have y'all met with all of the department head, other, you know, that's going to be working in the courthouse? Everybody, make sure they have enough space, room?
For the most part, yeah, we've met with everybody in the criminal justice center. We met with everybody, I think the children's department has this once. In your courthouse, we haven't had a lot of conversations in the old courthouse with who's going to be in there because for the most part, interior-wise, that was at the beginning was sort of, we weren't focusing on the interior, we were more concerned with the exterior. And then the exterior envelope, the foundation sorted. But that's sort of evolved over spatial requirements and who was going to go in there. So we've had the county attorney on it. There's probably one or two individuals we've got to meet with a little bit further. But we really hadn't sort of organized the interior of that. I want to sort it out. That'd be a good start. But anybody there, we've still got final decisions to make on the interior when we get, when we unassemble, the exterior is secure. It's a weird point of, for the most part, we're leaving interior walls where they're going to be. Upstairs, to make the second floor work for the county attorney's office. I need to go re-jigging if we've done that. And I think we're all pretty happy with how that looks. But again, we were trying to keep as many of the set of interior walls as possible.
I know we had at one meeting like this, where we had the foreland here that we went through with department heads and talked about how it would be situated, and how the Commissioners offices would be situated, the treasurer, the auditor, and how that could be affected by the move.
And Commissioners too. We were Commissioners offices too, that is why.
Just kind of do a little review of what we've talked about. So it seems to be some mix-ups from time to time as to how we're going to get it done. And like I said, if anybody, we've done this before, but if anybody has a problem with it, we can discuss it and get it taken care of. What it looks like now, the first thing is going to be the envelope of the courthouse. And the courthouse and the criminal justice facility on Third Street here can run apart simultaneously. I mean, the courthouse will start remodeling the courthouse and so forth, so on. Of course, we've got to be out of this building before the library can move in here. So the library has got to be cleared before Ms. Eva can move into the library. So what it appears, and like I said, if it's a different table, Jan will either stay where she's at while the construction goes on or move partially into where the old treasurer used to be. More than likely, stay where she's at. But until Ms. Eva can move into the old library building, then that door between the treasurer's office and hers will be taken out, and there'll be a section of that included in the treasurer's office. The, of course, once the criminal justice and the courthouse is completed, the county attorney, the auditor, the treasurer, the county judge, and the Commissioners will all move into the courthouse. The, was the old district courtroom will become the Commissioners courtroom and county courtroom for county court judicial services. The, when the adult probation moves out of the building there, I can find on the corner where it will become the archives of the, that we now lease from the paper. The DA's office will move into the criminal justice facility. The, what's currently the DA's office now could either be sold or leased by the county for whatever available, you know. I mean, it's a nice office building downtown. So the, I spoke with Mr. Thorne the other day about the trees along Third Street over there, that possibly before we get down to the construction of that, it may be the Commissioners could remove those trees and be much more cost-saving than having someone, especially when that field come in and do.
How many trees are we talking?
About five, isn't it?
About five, yeah.
The five big Arizona ash trees, is what they're on. And the, oh, and Ms. Eva had said sometime back as far as the old library there, could do that with local contractors to take care of that. And I had a call that Friday from Mr. Thorne and had about, that somebody called him and asked about that. So this afternoon, he's going to walk through that building with Ms. Eva and kind of give her some ideals as to what he has in hand. But outside of that, am I missing something we need to talk about?
I told him to make sure that he met with everybody, make sure they got the rooms.
That was one of the things that everybody, everybody, that each step he took, and in many cases, not only the department head, but some of the people from the departments that were there to explain their needs, such as adult probation and others. Met with the district judges as far as the courtroom, to make sure. I think Sheriff's met with him and everything, and.
I think the biggest thing in the old courthouse was, it was really most, he needed to go in there for the most part, but we were trying to keep most of the offices, because we're on limited budget, trying to keep the walls where they were. We were even going to try and keep some of the offices that had been recently painted to maybe keep that as sort of the running theme for the color scheme. So the interior to it was, we knew that the county attorney's moving over there, the Commissioners moving over there. But for the most part, you know, the envelope wasn't going to change. Most of the interior walls aren't going to change. We were trying to bring those sort of intervening, sort of intermediate walls in that would create the Commissioners offices. But for the most part, apart from having to upgrade the residential facilities which we have to cover, most of the interior really was staying more or less as its, and then sort of give a flux area where it is there currently is, who would then occupy that area if she was moving out.
And the grant that we were talking about, when we got into this, it appeared that we probably wasn't going to get any grants. And this is a four hundred and fifty?
What was that?
Thousand dollar grant, which will, that's that much, you know, that'll help. And that's the.
More reading, right?
And there's more grant money available, but in reading the, everything that's required, it's probably not worth the effort to go because they're looking at removing the stuff off the courthouse, taking all of the annexes off. And the annexes themselves, the cost to replace them would be a tremendous amount. So once we get through this phase of it, we should, everything should be clean and sailing. And it's really an exciting time for our county to be able to meet the growth with the buildings that we have as economically as we've been able to put it together. And it's just, like I said, it's a very exciting time. I think once people seize the results of it and sees that there's going to be little or no impact on their taxes, that people look at it much differently than many have in fact. This is a public hearing on courthouse annex one, two, three, update comments. And that means that anyone in the audience may question or comment or whatever at this time.
Judge, I was just going to say, if there is a department head or an elected official that wants to, not necessarily revisit from the standpoint of any changes, but to revisit from the standpoint of explanation, explanation of, again, what we're doing, I assume that that.
Well, Lindsay's available. I mean.
Anytime, Michael. Love my cause. I can call anytime. I'll obviously.
Would you be available at the court today, since you're already here?
I'd like to.
Sure.
Judge, I don't know if the peanut festival contacted you or not. They contacted me. Just Lindsay, when do you think we'll be in full swing? That's what I'm thinking, too.
I basically told, told, as far as the parking lot, I said, it'll be right in full swing. I said, this might be a good time to test it. I think the park.
Sorry, what was the question?
Well, we should be in full swing though, as far as construction going in, like in October. We have the peanut festival always.
Oh, yes.
That's what I'm thinking, right?
Oh, yes.
It's going to be hard, what you're saying, to allocate the parking lot to the carnival.
And we need, we'll need it because I'm sure part of that, they've been looking for lay-down space. So, and we briefly talked about that when we were digging holes.
Right.
When, that we need to look at, you know, where the construction fence would be, where we could maybe, maybe those parking spots where we had all the trucks parked. Maybe that we should just get fenced off, that that's the lay-down prep area. That's maybe the access to the court site, which still enables us to have the views of the rest of the square facilities that doesn't interrupt.
How far do you foresee the construction fence on the north side? You know, the long, long out.
How about the Commissioners' courtroom?
You know.
Will it be set out further than it is now?
I don't think so. I think, I would like where we were all parked along the side. I think if we can probably take that first row that sort of faces towards the courthouse on the, on the north side, right, the one that we had the, you've got the, if you've got the front of the courthouse, you've got the parking there that runs along, not on main street side, but in the parking lot side, that first row right there. I think if we probably dedicate that to as a lay-down hard tarmac area that they could come in, bring vehicles in if they needed to, and have it, you know, and maybe have storage, lockable storage right there. That's probably most of what we need.
But then on the courtyard itself, going towards the north side, downtown area, would we have to move that fence out, find it out?
I don't think so. I think we'll probably.
Probably, and on a temporary basis, when you redo that wall.
That's about it. That's where all it would be. But I think we could, I mean, actually be moving it out, maybe.
When that wall comes down, it's going to have to be.
Yeah, on that one side for sure. But that's probably going to be it. I don't think, I don't think we'll need, the rest of the fencing is probably still waiting. And actually, it'd all be a point of maybe adding extra length gate on both sides, take a whole fence, just move it out temporarily. And we just probably just leave it there until, for the duration, until we are prepared on it.
That's like the only thing it might interfere with, could be the corner. So the corner would interfere with all the other vendors and so forth that use that.
Sure. The city used to put that on that street in front of City Hall, didn't it?
It still do.
Still do.
Yeah, if only they're going to take up the front row, like he's saying.
That wouldn't be bad at all.
It wouldn't be bad at all, then. That's all they need.
Yeah, I don't think we, there's a lot of room inside the fencing as well, but it would require boys and garage replacements. But for the most part, they can do a lot of setup inside the fence currently as well. So I think they probably have most of the need to do that.
Then that really wouldn't affect the carnival, then, if that's all.
It really shouldn't.
That's a good point.
Yeah, if that's all it is.
I tell you what, it's still us being in the middle. I think the carnival piece, or the city, the peanut festival go right through Lindsay, but I don't want to get in the middle of it.
All of a sudden, they're ready to set up, and we have space taken, and they don't. Make this a problem?
We'll know in the next month.
Yeah, just let us know, and we'll look forward to making that. We'll show that with the labor company, we'll make sure we get that squared away. I mean, for the most part, I just think you can imagine building coming scaffolding. Give you some idea of, you know, and they need to walk outside that. But for the most part, that's most of what we're going to need. They'd be up close to the building, like replacing wall section, things like that.
The only issue, assuming that the space would work for the carnival, the issue would be that it pretty well ties the parking lot up for about ten days, doesn't it, from the standpoint of setup and take-down? Whether somehow that would interfere with our ability to continue bringing supplies in.
I think we'd be there anyway.
Yeah.
What they'd be looking at mobilizing for the festival, when would that roughly, what week?
Oh, it's always the second weekend of October.
So you're looking at probably the third week of September starting to.
The first, the second week, the first week of October.
That's where they just, a week, a week prior to.
A week, yeah, but a couple of days to take down. So you've got about a ten-day period. It seems to me.
They would start probably set up on like the fifth, and then be moved out by the twelfth.
Okay, great.
I guess the only question I have is, there is still some time to do some interior tweaking on the old courthouse, as far as you're drawing? Excuse me, is there a proposal? Excuse me, is there a proposed date of completion?
Not quite yet, until we get, until we get the final numbers from general contract.
There's a number of projects being carried on at one time with this, that, that one depends on the other.
Yeah. Yeah. The feeling was that as far as, as far as moving back into the old courthouse, we're gonna be probably the first quarter of, of next year.
Yes.
And probably not too far behind as far as.
No, we're not, we're almost right behind it, we could go with this center if we can get, make sure we secure our contract and we can move on to use the several items.
And, and those two are dependent upon, obviously, the library coming in here and then that, so.
That's, you're right.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult to, to set up our date until certain things happen.
We've got an idea, but it's sort of, it's getting, it's getting the, the old courthouse livable again, so then we can get everyone over there.
But that affects the budget also.
Um, not necessarily, no, I mean, it, it, it's, 'cause we still, we're still, we receive numbers on the criminal justice center, this building here, the center, the, the budget and the numbers we've had in for the courthouses, we've got those, so we're, we're good. They've got a re, re, 'cause we had it in, I don't know, maybe three months ago, they've got a, we run a few different numbers to make sure the numbers are still fine, but we're within the budget, we're good.
Anything else? Thank you, we appreciate. We'll move on then to item five, Senator Fernandez, Waterloo Valley Family Violence Shelter Incorporated, proclamation recognized in April, two thousand fourteen, sexual assault awareness and prevention month in Wilson County.
Your morning. She has the, this is a copy of Paul. Whereas every two minutes, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted, and in Texas, one in five women and one in twenty men are victims of sexual assault. Whereas according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin School of Social Work, approximately one point nine million Texans have been sexually victimized. Whereas most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and only twenty percent of rapes are ever reported to the police. Whereas it is appropriate to salute the more than twenty million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas national and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Whereas police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that result in the prosecution and incarceration of offenders. Whereas sexual assault is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year round, and in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas national and community organizations, businesses in the private sector, and the media urge through national sexual assault awareness of sexual violence and strategies to increase the incidence of sexual assault. Now therefore, we the undersigned do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Wilson County, and all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and those who work toward awareness and prevention, and by participating in community efforts.
For those of you in courtroom that don't know, Ms. Fernandez was an employee of the sheriff's department for several years and worked closely with the county attorney's office in, in many of these type of cases before she was employed by the Waterloo Valley Family Violence Shelter. And always kept a very professional image, and we really appreciate her service, whether it be working with us or there, all for total, so thank you, Mike.
You need a motion, yes?
Yes. Motion, Commissioner, file, all favor.
Aye.
Item six, Ricky Ramon, Rick Morales. This. Okay, item six, uh, Vicki Morales, Wilson County Commissioner, precinct number three, request to purchase a ball load, DL seven DB backhoe for precinct three on by board. Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner file, all favor.
Aye.
Item seven, Larry Wiley, Wilson County Commissioner, precinct four, request to purchase a asphalt super for precinct number four on by board. Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner file, all favor.
Why must he come try it on my roof?
Oh, before, item ten, request approval for contract with Republican Democratic Party's primary runoff election poll places of hard duty, May twenty seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Judge, I will go ahead and pass it out, I'll go with the board, it's quickly reviewed, it won't shake along. Uh, we met with both chairman on this, and we had worked it out to about five boxes, and then we ended up adding a box. If you would go with me and bear with me, with during the runoff election, you can cross precinct lines.
Oh, okay.
If, if the ballot is uniform across both parties, and it is, both ballots are across the county, so there is no just a precinct or anything, so it doesn't hurt anything. Uh, we decided that we would combine boxes one oh one and four sixteen into open boxes up on the hill. Sacred Park would have one oh two, two oh six, and two oh seven, which is right here in town. And I believe that two oh seven may be the show line coming into town, so they're on traveling for the Gannada area, who was serving one oh three and one oh four. Hope City Call would be two oh five, two oh eight, and two oh nine. The Laverne would have all boxes, including four fifteen, which is, uh, yes, High Caster Wood Valley would go into Laverne, go into Laverne. And then Stockdale would have the, the big four one four box, okay? That would give you six boxes.
I don't see another answer, but the only complaint that I see is gonna be four fifteen, because there are, because of the situation that we had whenever there was a protest of how the lines were drawn, and now we have a split county with Quayle on one side and, and Hosa on the other. People in four fifteen that were a part of the old Marcelina box, or it could be a part of the Stockdale box, and now they're gonna have to go from there to, to Laverne. And I don't have a better answer, but you're gonna have complaints.
Would you like for me in any way to change it, this is the time.
I don't, I, I don't know how we would change it.
Can you, they have to be wholly in one though, right? Because, uh, the thing about four fifteen, and like I said, you've already answered my question, but if you could go from say ninety seven, or five thirty, uh, five thirty nine south to go into Stockdale, then to the others to go.
Or Florisville, either way, but Laverne is gonna be.
And there will be early voting though. I think, I think it's important that we, we get the information out to these people that have difficulty in traveling that far, that early voting is available to them, and, and.
I, I had complaints about they're just having to go up to, to High Caster, so when you throw them to Laverne, because that, that side of the county doesn't really go to Laverne that much, they go to Florisville, they really go to Florisville or maybe Stockdale. It's just a problem that when we set this up, we didn't think we were gonna have, those folks were going to be going to Stockdale, but.
They need to vote, they should warn. Will we change the line?
Well, no, they voted at Marcelina.
Yeah.
They voted at Marcelina, and then why we changed it. Had I known that that line was gonna change, well then, I would've talked to you about leaving Marcelina and doing something else, but.
Do, do you want four fifteen to go in some of the members, or are you okay with?
I don't know, like you said, it's not, it's not a good alternative.
No, because the, the, the majority of the voters are up in the High Caster, that whole area up there on seven seventy five. So that group in general would be a lot more comfortable going into Laverne than they would going into Florisville. Uh, it's just we've got that, that small group of people out there that, that, um, fortune just didn't fall in their favor. And, and it's kinda sad, we can't deal with it now, and I don't know if we can deal with it.
But honestly, if we'd had a site that it could've been held at, we would've established a box four seventeen.
Exactly, but there, there's no public buildings.
No public place in, in that area.
No, not.
Because we only have three, the three boxes in precinct four.
But, but you are gonna get some complaints, as will I. And is there gonna be a late night for S T?
No, it'll be just that one week.
Eight to five. And what week is that?
And there's no Saturday, it is the week before the twenty seventh. Twenty seventh falls on a Tuesday.
Is that, have you covered everything?
Yes, yes, I'm ready.
Commissioner, I'm ready, Commissioner file, all favor.
Aye.
Hey, Commissioner Wiley, you got a copy of the resolution for the light at one twenty three?
Yes, I do.
Would you, would you read that into the ready?
Yes.
Let me, may I make a statement?
Sure.
Um, the reason that I ask that we revisit this is that we had a resolution, as you, as you recall, um, a couple of years ago, to have a traffic study because of the increased traffic where the blinking light is in. The, uh, Techstock came and set up in early December, it was a rainy week, um, the traffic apparently wasn't out as much as it should be. And their answer, um, was that the amount of traffic did not reconcile with the cost associated with establishing a traffic light at that point. That they can't simply just change the flashing light to a regular stoplight, that it required now totally new equipment, which was eighty-five thousand dollars to establish a traffic light. The, the reason that I'm asking is twofold, one, we have had, gosh, this, this month, we have three new oil-related companies coming into Stockdale. So the truck traffic continues to increase, but for whatever reason, Techstock has come in and they are now converting the intersection to the eighty-five thousand dollars they said they couldn't justify, except instead of making it a traffic light, they're making it a flashing light as it was. And so, that, that was my justification, and it says resolution. Whereas there is currently a flashing signal at the intersection of State Highway one twenty-three and Business eighty-seven and downtown Stockdale. Should say beautiful downtown Stockdale. Uh, whereas in October of two thousand eleven, Wilson County requested Techstock consider installing a traffic light at the location. Whereas a traffic signal study was conducted in accordance with the Texas Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the intersection of Business eighty-seven and State Highway one twenty-three did not meet the minimum requirements for installation of the traffic signal. Whereas shortly after the study was completed, there was a fatality at the intersection. Whereas truck traffic has continued to increase and several trucking operations have relocated to Stockdale in the interim. Whereas Techstock is currently installing infrastructure that is necessary for a stoplight, but it appears they are only going to install a caution, uh, light again. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Wilson County Commissioners Court is requesting that a traffic signal be installed at this location. Installing a traffic signal now would save the cost of conversion at a later date. If a traffic signal is not being installed, Wilson County would like to request another traffic signal study be performed. Presented this the twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand and fourteen.
Oh, you, Commissioner, I'll, 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 all favor.
Aye.
Item twelve. The end.
Okay.
Item.
I have too many seconds on you.
Item A is permit number eighty-six, E O G Resources Precinct, City Council two oh four, being approved.
This is a high range crossing, and they're going to cross, and they're gonna move two oh four.
Is that where you have to live?
That was all.
Oh, your commissioner files, second commissioner, I'm having all the papers.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Item thirteen, Edwin Baker, Governor's Public Safety, zip, Fern Van, discussion potential action.
Well, we're just, uh, as y'all go over in spring now, uh, we can go back to using that A B D I I dry on deck that we use for Fern Van, and, uh, it has the county well under, has a hole well under the line for a Fern Van, but the dryer is now precinct two and the three oh two area primary, uh, doesn't mean the water fires, but we still have them, they're just not getting away from the, generally is. Grass fires, water pockets, and, and I'd like to recommend that we lift the Fern Van and let them get some burning done before summer gets here and it does get dry again, we have to go back in the burn room.
Okay, got me? File, all favor. Uh, regardless, every time we lift the Fern Van, or put the Fern Van on, we get complaints. And they are, uh, areas, the county's a, a large county, and there's specific areas. And when the Fern Van is on, agriculture burning and everything, I was contacting the fire marshal to determine if it's safe or not. They, a lot of that is allowed, depending on certain factors, on real high wind, they just not, no, it's just a matter of balance and trying to do our best to serve everybody and, and, and keep people safe, and at the same time, as you mentioned, whenever you have dry, a dry period of time and, and, uh, you're not able to use to burn, uh, much of the brush and the grass builds up, and then it does create a large hazard, hazards whenever, uh, it does get dry. So, uh, by being able to lift it for a period of time while it's relatively safe, we're able to keep some of the larger fire plans.
Do you want them to still contact you on the ad burn?
No, the, the, it'd be better if they just went ahead and took care of, uh, I mean, you know, I still have them calling the sheriff's department. We've been trying for years to get them out of that habit, you know, to call over there and we'll tell you where the Fern Man's on or off. And do you want some type of record sent to you if they called it?
No, it's.
There's not, there's really, other than being in a Fern Man, there's no way to make a call, if you can ask them to.
And I think one thing's important for people to understand is that we put the Fern Man on, we take the Fern Man off, when the Fern Man's off, uh, burning again. Everybody's still responsible to, to be safe with it, if you burned your, uh, neighbor's property up, you're gonna be held liable for it, you know. It's not, it, it, uh.
It primarily does, we go by the outdoor burn regulations even during a Fern Man, except for I dropped the wind speed a little bit that we allowed, that's pretty much it.
Okay, anything else on the Fern Man? Moving on to item fourteen, discuss and take action on Fourth Street Water Main with low test required by City of Florisville or a library Springfield Design System three oh five, starred by the City of Florisville.
Yeah, that's right, um, okay, the, for the international engineers finish up. Um, okay, the, for the international engineer to finish up, uh, our library plans, you know, require, they said he will require us to have the flood, flood flow test that he can size his meter. We met with the city, um, and they said they do it for us, uh, and then they came back with a bill a little bit later. So, I'm sure you can chat with anybody at the city or not, but, uh, it's about two hundred bucks, but I need to get that so that they can use the calculations to make sure we have enough, uh, length of five, so we can do the five point test.
Motion, Commissioner File, Commissioner Gomez, all in favor. Fifteen, discussions potential action shall occur regarding the procedure for preparing a new handbook of employment policies procedures which comply with the federal laws and local laws for Commissioners Court approved, and training for managers after completion of the new handbook.
That's mine. I think we all know that we're trying to put together a new employee handbook, and we've had some discussion over that there is a committee, um, whether the committee should prepare it and then let, uh, the county attorney review it, or the county attorney prepare the basic one, uh, and mark the areas where the county has some options on what they want to do, and then present it to the committee. So, obviously, our recommendation is that we be able to prepare it first and then take it to the committee.
Basically collaborative, actually, you'll go through the turn hand book, correct anything that might be not legal or, or not meet the standards, and take it back to the, uh, committee, and the committee then will review that, and will come to, and then present it to the court for approval, is that correct?
And I already have, you know, people bringing me things that aren't in our current one that need to go in there. And then I'll be responsible for making sure the legality, everything where the law has changed will go in there.
As, as a member of the committee, I don't have a problem with that, as long as we work together, and as long as you keep it simple and don't do a whole other, just attorney...
No, I'm right, very clearly, and, um, you know, no...